I'm gonna read commission rules and procedures before we begin the meeting. Plan and zoning commission is generally an advisory body to the city council. City council will hold a public hearing and make the final decision on all matters before the commission, other than site plans and preliminary subdivision plaits. Commission's decision to approve or deny a site plan or preliminary subdivision plat is the final decision of the city unless the applicant appeals to the city council. Please contact the city clerk or community development department staff for details on council hearings. The applicant will be given 10 minutes to present the request. Proponents and then opponents from the public are then allowed to speak in that order with each speaker allowed a maximum of five minutes. The applicant is then allowed five minutes for rebuttal. Hearing will then be closed and the commission will discuss and vote on the issue. All comments are to be germane to the item under consideration and speakers are to maintain a courteous manner. Items listed on the consent portion of the agenda will not be individually discussed and will be considered for approval in accordance with the recommendation of the staff report unless an individual present or member of the commission requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately under the public hearing agenda. City of Des Moines is pleased to provide accommodations to individuals or groups with disabilities encourages participation in city government. To better serve you and possible, please notify us at least three business days in advance at (515) 283-4209. Should special accommodations be required, assistive listening devices are available for meetings in the council chambers. Plan and zoning commission meetings are broadcast on media cable channel seven for customers with that service. Broadcast is also streamed live in real time on the city of Des Moines website at www.dmoinegov.org. Click on "Watch Live" link. Minutes from last time? Do I have motion? Mike moved. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed? Nobody. Minutes are approved. Consent items, we have two items so far on the consent agenda, and I'll read those first. Item one is requests from city engineer Jeb Brewer for vacation of the following segments of undeveloped street right of way. There's three of them. Segment of Amos Avenue, west, southwest 17th Street between properties at 7112, southwest 17th, and 7200, southwest 17th. B is a segment west of southwest 17th Street, north of where it intersects with southwest 16th Street between properties at 7402, southwest 17th Street, and 7404, southwest 17th Street. And C, a segment west of southwest 17th Street, north of where it intersects with Havens Avenue between properties at 7500, southwest 17th Street, and 7502, southwest 17th Street. Any commissioners want that item pulled? Anyone in the audience opposed to that item? Okay, thank you. Item two is requests from Kevin Holdings, L.C., owner represented by Elizabeth Nelson to vacate the north 12 feet of Scott Avenue, joining the properties at 1830, 1900, 1916, and 1920 Scott Avenue between a point approximately 300 feet east of southwest 18th Street to southeast 20th Street. Commission, anybody? Anybody in the audience opposed to that item? Thank you. Any other items to consider on consent?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move four and five to consent.
Four and five, alright. We'll read four. Requests from Hubbell Properties, LLC owner represented by Steve Nieber, for review and approval of a site plan Broadway Heights Phase Two under design guidelines for multiple family dwellings on property located at 4282 East 50th Street to allow development of 65 apartment units within a three-story 30-unit building and a three-story 35-unit building. Any commissioners opposed to that? How about anybody in the audience? Okay. And item five is a request from Melbourne condominiums owner represented by Steve Nieber for review and approval of a site plan Melbourne Apartments Phase Three under design guidelines for multiple family dwellings on property located at 5515 Southeast 14th Street to allow development of 72 apartments within two three-story 36-unit buildings. Commission? Anybody in the audience opposed?
I have a question, please. I don't have a problem with it, but I do have a question under staff recommendation number five, and if it can be answered for me, which I think it can be, I'll be...
Okay, Jason?
The recommendation reads provision of tree protection measures on the site plan for any existing trees to be maintained. I might hope that all of the trees would be maintained.
Well, what the, that's...
Does this mean...
I think there's a word missing here. This is really what we're asking for is some notes and graphics on the site plan that explain how they're gonna protect trees that aren't being removed.
Well, then why don't you say for existing trees to be retained?
Okay, maintained, retained?
Well, maintained is something different than retained.
Okay.
I mean, to me.
Okay.
Clarity sometimes works. That's my question, sir.
I think that our, the end goal of what our intention was for that language is exactly what yours is. I don't, if we wanna replace it as retain, we can do so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, anything else? Then I'd entertain a motion to move four and five on. Okay. Any discussion about that? Then we'll vote by raising your hand for moving four and five onto consent. Those opposed? Nobody? Thank you. So, now we need a motion on the consent items which are one, two, four, and five. Ted? Ted's moving. Any discussion? Okay, no discussion. Please raise your right hand for approving the consent items. Opposed? Nobody? Thank you. So, to reiterate, if you're here on items one, two, four, and five, we've passed them. So we have one item left, which is item three.
Chair members, you wanna read it?
I'll read item three and then we'll call that a talk, Jason. Item three is a request from Scott Hartsuk, Dennis Gronenboom, purchasers to rezone property at 3500 Kingman Boulevard, subject property owned by Parker Street Foundation and Harold Wells. Jason?
The response cards are being passed around. You also had a handful of letters, I think there's three letters total, that were at your seats when you got to the meeting, from the couple of adjoining property owners and then the neighborhood association. This is just the response map. Ariel identifying the subject property at the southwest corner of Kingman Boulevard and 35th Street. That's to the north, or south of it is the church. This is the front facade of the existing building, so you're looking south, standing on Kingman Boulevard. This is 35th Street, looking north, so this is the subject property, the drive to the south, then looking down that driveway towards the west. This is from the church property to the south, looking back into the subject property. And then views down the west property line of the subject site and seeing some of the property to the west. A lot of you are probably familiar with this property known as the Throw Center. It's, over the years, has been used for a establishment that you could rent space for events, an event center. And going back through the history of the site, that was never established legally. I believe there'd been some church activity use in the property prior to '79, but now we have, we're in a position where we have some folks that are interested in purchasing the property, and as part of that, they haven't bought the property yet, they, as part of their due diligence, they are seeking rezoning, essentially to continue on with the same use with the assembly, or the kind of assembly uses which are, you know, you could use for events, event center, weddings, receptions, that sort of thing, and then have an office space on the upper floor of the structure. To do so, they are seeking rezoning of the property to the NPC. It is proposed to be a limited NPC zoning district, the neighborhood pedestrian commercial zoning district. That's what NPC stands for. That is a unique zoning classification in that it has design guidelines that are reviewed on a site plan level by the planning zoning commission versus kind of your traditional zoning districts that have hard, fast, bulk standards and design really isn't thought about quite as much to the degree as the NPC district. Obviously, its pedestrian orientation is kind of the main goal of that zoning classification. It does allow, that district typically allows a lot of commercial activity. In this case, they are proposing limitations. There's limitations on the uses within the staff report, basically limited to R160 uses, which is what the property is owned now. In addition to that, I'll just go ahead and put the staff report here. So uses in the R160 district, office space, and then event centers, event center for meeting, reception, and assembly space. So that would be the uses that would be limited to if this staff recommendation moves forward. We also have other conditions, and I think it probably just might be best if I just, if you bear with me and I just kind of read through them to make sure we are all aware of each one. Any use of the site and any future site modifications shall be in accordance with a site plan under design guidelines for NPC district as approved by the planning zoning commission. So anything that might, would potentially be administrative level would, instead of being done administratively, would come to you before a public hearing. Any use of the building must be in compliance with all building codes, fire codes, including those related to occupancy load, emergency exits, and restroom facilities. In order to comply with minimum parking requirements, any use of the premise for an office and/or event center use shall occupy no more than 1,200 square feet of area for the office space and no more than 1,950 square feet for assembly space. And what that does is that limits the square footage for those uses to the amount of parking that's already on the site. They do have some relationship with the church, but as you saw, if you had a chance to look at the letter from the church, they, they don't have like a written guarantee that they can always use that parking, so we thought it was best to tie the amount of space used for those uses to what they actually have on their property, and NPC allows you to count on-street, adjoining on-street, so that's why they're able to have enough parking to allow that level of square footage. The existing structure shall not be expanded and shall not be modified to alter the existing residential character, so we wanted to continue on looking as a house, kind of having that appearance, fitting in with the neighborhood. The property should not be permitted licensed establishment for selling alcohol, liquor, wine, and/or beer. So generally, what we're saying, it reads on that however caterers, residents, and renters, and guests may serve and consume alcohol in accordance with all city-state requirements. And so, they couldn't have a permanent license for this location, but if a caterer comes in, they have their own or a temporary one, then as long as they're following all the established rules, then they can do that. Hours of operation shall be limited to between 7:00 a.m. to 12:00 a.m., with all events ending by 11:00 p.m. So you have an hour, so to clean up. A six-foot tall solid wood fence shall be provided along the west property line with the rear yard area located on either the subject property or the adjoining property. And that may sound a little odd, but there is, I don't know if you picked up in the photograph, there is an existing fence on the neighboring property, and so, we're not, as long as that fence is there, the owner of this property wouldn't necessarily have to build a new fence, but at any time that would come down, the zoning condition would require them to do so, to install a replacement, to provide buffering. Nine, signage on the premise shall be limited to a monument sign not exceeding 24 square feet. The site shall be operating in compliance with the noise control ordinance. Any residential dwelling unit within the structure shall be in accordance with any necessary rental certificates, if they happen to do a residential use, which would be allowed by the R160. Any trash enclosure on site shall conform to the standards of the zoning, and shall be comprised of durable materials that complement the principal building with steel gates.
I think that that covers it all. I'd be happy to answer any questions. What's my half for staff?
Jason, I have a couple of questions. Your photographs, about the third from the last, it's the south view. Keep going. One more. Oh, I guess, other way.
Well, you know what? I did have one. Here we go.
Is that a Kaibo? What do I see there?
It doesn't appear to be.
Through the trees, is that?
Yeah, I mean, it looks...
Affordable res, affordable party?
It looks like that. I mean, that's a...
We can ask the applicant to clarify that. Now, I will say that the applicant hasn't bought the property and operated there, so I don't know how they, you know, what information they can provide us, but it does appear in that picture to be a Kaibo.
I'm sorry. I didn't turn on my microphone. The merits are coming, I understand. Well, I just wondered about the interaction of the Kaibo with the assembly part of the facility and the partying, and if that's why it's there, or if there's a temporary construction project underway.
Are the recommended condition about compliance with building and fire code and related to fixtures and load restroom facilities would, you know, if they're having, if it was approved and they're operating, if they're having a level of people and it dictates more restrooms than what's in there, they'd either have to provide more or have less, less of a load to comply with the conditions that are recommended?
How many square feet, looking at condition four of assembly space, are there? You say they are limited to use of 1,950 because of the parking restriction.
How big is the building?
Is there more space available than 1,950 feet?
The, the building in its entirety is 3,606 square feet.
On several floors?
Right.
Okay. I'm wondering how you enforce the use of 1,950 square feet? That's just a...
Sure.
Inquiry for, for discussion.
I don't know, off the top of my head. I don't know if it's, I don't recall. Let me see if we jotted it down.
And then, I guess it would be by neighborhood complaint that events ending after 11:00 p.m. would be brought to the attention of city enforcement. I'm thinking of the Val Air Ballroom noise right now. And are there rental certificates presently issued for residential occupancy of this building?
No, I don't believe so. I think we're just trying to cover all our bases of the possibilities based on what the allowed uses would be if it was approved.
I have a couple of questions. First of all, I'm reviewing this letter from Eric Knapp, and do we have any, has staff investigated how many incidents that is referred to here has happened on this property? And I see item number six in the recommendations is that they can serve alcohol with permits and that sort of thing?
Sure. We did have a police report run for the past, for the property, or for the area around the property for the past 12 months or so, and none of these are for the subject property. That doesn't mean that there aren't things happening there, but this is what we have. We have for, on, from police record wise, we have 3505, 35th and School, but we didn't have anything specifically for the site, but we did check into it.
Okay, and then is the alcohol, item number six, is that a change? Are they currently serving alcohol there, or is it just kind of, you're just taking this opportunity to get some guide?
Yes.
Okay.
We have people that wanna purchase the property and have their operation there very similar to what's there, what has been there, and so this is an opportunity to put a lot of conditions on it, have design control with regard to if the zoning was put into place. Like I said early, NPC has a lot of public review, because we have to have the design reviewed by you in a public hearing where we give neighbors notice, so it is a good opportunity to tack on some things.
Okay, thank you.
Jason, do you know if any of these suggested requirements force anything undue on the applicant, if they said they're agreeing with all of them, or if there are any of them that are...
I'm not, let's see, they're here tonight, I don't know if you, you're okay? You're okay with the staff, right?
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Jason? Ted?
Jason, I'm just curious about the alcohol restriction thing on the catering thing as well. Is that any different than anyone's residence in the city of Des Moines? Isn't that pretty much...
Probably, that's a fair...
Pretty much the same as what you can do at your own house?
That's a fair statement, pretty much, I think. You could have a catered event that they have their...
Right. But you don't have a liquor license to sell?
Right.
Yeah. Thanks.
It's just the frequency and types of events that are held at this facility that we thought it was important to be specific.
Anything else for Jason? Thank you. Could we have the applicant come up and present?
Mr. Chairman, my name is Scott Hartsuk. I'm here with Dennis Gronenboom, and we are the two guys purchasing this property.
Address, please.
1134 38th Street. We live about five blocks from the Throw Center. We've lived there for 25 years. Ever since we've lived in Des Moines for about 30 years, this has been the Throw Center from, since 1979. Harold Wells is the owner and operator of it. What he has used it for all those years is an event center, and it's become an important institution in the Drake neighborhood. People hold their weddings there, their retirement parties, birthday parties, really those important events that they need to hold that they can't hold in their own home. Let me tell you kind of what the typical party is, because I've been to several of Generally what people, there is no liquor license for the property. So generally what happens, and this is what we intend to do, is we're renting out the space to, you know, if you wanna come hold your retirement party. You go, typically you go to Hy-Vee, you pick up your veggie trays, you get some food made at home, you bring it in, you bring your wine in, whatever you wanna drink, and you serve it to the desk. Some people will actually hire a caterer, and a caterer does have a liquor license, so they can provide the liquor and wine during those parties. But this is what it's been used for since 1979. And we've known Harold since, well, probably for about 20 years. We told him probably 15, 20 years ago that if he ever wanted to sell this property, we were interested in buying it, because we think it is an important resource for our neighborhood, and we wanna continue it that way. So unfortunately, his health's been declining for the last four or five years. He's in a nursing home over at Wesley Acres now, so he has to sell it, and we're interested in continuing his operation of the property. Being lawyers, though, we suspected that maybe Harold hadn't quite gone through the appropriate approval processes for this property, and so we contacted the city and asked if we would be able to continue this for the same uses, and we were told, we'll look at it. And so we submitted various affidavits from people to basically prove that it's been used like this for 34 years. And the city said, no, it's not quite enough for us, and so you're gonna have to go through the rezoning process to NPC. So that's what we're here for today. As you know, NPC allows all kinds of uses, and, and so we told the city staff, we're not interested in all those kinds of uses. All we're interested in is continuing to have this be a community event center, and then there are, there are three rooms up on the second floor that we would like to rent out to, our preference is to rent them out to some nonprofit groups. Like when I first moved to town in the 80s, the Sierra Club was up there, and then they got a little bigger and moved out. So if we, if we can't find nonprofit groups, then we would rent it out to other types of organizations for office use up there. We don't intend any changes to the building, no additions, no new buildings. Kind of the only changes we're looking at is if, if you look at the picture up there now, there's, there's the driveway that goes up to a paved parking lot, and then there's a, this big area that's really hard-packed gravel. We'd like to take that gravel out and turn it into either grass or, or flower gardens. And then we'll hopefully also plant a bunch of trees and bushes and flowers to make it look better. We've, we had talked with the church next door. Harold has had an informal agreement with the church for all this time. They let the guests at the Throw Center use the parking lot except for Sunday mornings and Wednesday evenings, and whenever they have something going on. And we talked with the church, they're willing to let us do that too. You know, they did have some concerns about, you know, trash and stuff after events on a Saturday night, and so I have to tell you, even though we're not the owners yet, and there have been some parties, you know, in the last few months, I've been over there at least three Sunday mornings picking up some trash. So we, we hope to be good neighbors with the church and, and do that. We had our, our neighborhood meeting last week. We had six neighbors show up. We had a fairly good discussion, I thought. We found their concerns, we told them what we wanted to do, and I think, I think most of the neighbors, there, there are a couple neighbors that do have objections. Everybody else we've talked to about this, up and down Kingman, in the Drake neighborhood, outside the Drake neighborhood, they're excited about us being able to continue this venue So I guess, I guess with that, I would just ask you to hopefully approve the rezoning, and I can answer any questions that you might have.
Questions for Scott? Will?
Scott, from the comment cards that we got back, there seems to be a general sense of goodwill towards this facility and the neighborhood. Do you plan on keeping the Throw Center name?
Anybody else?
Do you have any concerns with, over here, with any of the restrictions or any of the 12 items put out by staff? None?
No, no, we, we work with staff and, and they're completely acceptable.
Anybody else? Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Open the public hearing. Anybody in favor of this application, please come forward?
Derek Gore, Drake Neighborhood Association, 2422 Drake Park. I've been for you a few times recently complaining about things, so I'm glad that I actually have something here where we can actually do something right, and we're happy to support the applicants. As you see, currently it's listed as R160, and because Harold Wells, who... As you see, currently it's listed as R one sixty, and because Harold Wells, who, you know, I've known this property for years, and I think many of you here probably have been to maybe an art show or something like that or some great event, but I've also been invited to some parties that were at one AM or something like that, that I think a lot of times because the property was owned R one sixty or it was seen as a residential property, and there weren't strict rules, a lot of times some things were allowed to pass. And I think, you know, there were definitely some residents in the area that had concerns about, you know, we don't want a lot of late night parties like there have been in the past. We don't want people coming and pulling up and bringing their beer kegs and then selling beer out of the back of their truck, you know, for the, for the party there. You know, we want some stricter enforcement than we've had before. And I think that's what you see here with the noise restrictions, with the restriction on alcohol sales, with some of these other restrictions are really made to say, you know, the building should have been operating like this the whole time. And now, because we're putting this into the zoning and in the recommendations, we really have a true strong enforcement policy. And what our neighborhood association has been able to do is when we have a strong enforcement policy, we're able to work with our NPSD officers, with the city, with the police force on applying those rules. I think a lot of times what we have is when we have a house that's used like this and there aren't strong rules, the police sometimes show up and say, well, this is a residential house, they might let some things go. It might not even show up on a police report because they, which is kind of driving by and there's nothing really for them to report. Having some of these restrictions in this rezoning allows this building to be what Harold always had it be, but with the rules that make sure that it just doesn't go out of control. You know, Scott and Dennis have been volunteers for twenty years in our neighborhood association, so we have great trust in them. But of course, who knows what the next owners are going to be. So we encourage this rezoning with these rules to help us be able to enforce these rules for them and also for the next owners.
Any questions, Derek? Anyone else to speak in favor of the application? If you see any, so anybody opposed to the application, please step forward, put your name and address.
My name's Eric Knapp, and I live at thirty-five eighteen Kingman, directly adjacent to the subject property. I apologize for getting my letter in a little bit late. Has anybody not had a chance to review the letter I submitted with my comment card? Because if not, I can elaborate a little bit further. But my wife and I live directly next door. We have since two thousand nine. Prior to that, we lived about a half a block to the south on Thirty-Sixth Street. So we're, we're very familiar with the Throw Center and what it's been used for in the past, despite not being zoned or permitted for its past use. We've got an eight-year-old son and a five-year-old daughter that live obviously with us directly next door. And our concern isn't with the smaller gatherings and the office uses, it's the parties, the assembly, the broad use of that word "assembly," where you can have unmonitored, unregulated serving of alcohol. And I don't, I guess, looking at these, the twelve restrictions or rules, I don't, as a neighbor directly next door, we're not comfortable with how that would be regulated with, you know, the past experiences we've had living directly next door. And we appreciate what they're trying to do to preserve something somewhat positive within the neighborhood. But again, living directly next door, we have a very up-close look at, you know, the results or the challenges that come with the previous use. As I mentioned in my letter, we've had concerns with the parking on the street. You know, we have a boulevard that goes down the center of our street, and when there are larger functions, there, the church parking lot is not always available. I'd say about half the time it is, half the time it isn't. Even when it is available, there are still guests that park on the street. And living directly next door, people park on both sides of our driveway with their bumpers hanging out over the driveway, they're running late to a reception, and we have a hard time getting in and out of our driveway. In addition, we've, you know, the parties where there's alcohol involved, there's, or anniversaries, there's a lot of garbage, as was mentioned previously, that we have to pick up out of our yard and neighbors' yards that comes with having an anniversary party directly next door to your house. The key, the key term to us is the parties. It's just parties. And that, if it's an anniversary party, I've seen it's a Super Bowl party, it's an election party, it's a birthday party, it's a promotional party, it's a book sale party, it's all parties. And having two small children living directly next door, when we purchased the house, we specifically checked on the zoning, it wasn't zoned for that. It's not what we had intended as, you know, living directly next door to this facility. As I mentioned in my letter, we have seen altercations. You know, when you have drinking and you have no one there to monitor or police that, you do have disagreements, altercations. We've had intoxicated guests knock on our door to use the bathroom, use our phone. We've had people passed out, you know, on the sidewalks. It's not like that all the time. That is an exaggerated result, but it does happen. And I think with rezoning this and allowing this to be more legitimate, that is going to happen. And another concern is Harold, for the last, I think it's been about sixteen years, has always had a tenant. It's been used for habitational use as well. There's always been a tenant in there to generate some income without the need for a lot of these extracurricular events. And there's no intention of having habitational use in this facility, so all of the income to pay and maintain the property will come from these events. So as neighbors, we see that as an increase in all these problems that we've had in the past. I did note one particular mention here of even hearing gunshots outside the house about two years ago. Unfortunately, you know, there was nobody hurt and the crowd had dispersed before police had arrived. But again, we did follow up with the city after that moment, and were told again it was not zoned for that use. There's been, you know, I don't know if I would refer to it as theft necessarily, but we've had to go back over to and retrieve bikes, scooters, and yard toys from neighbors, or excuse me, from guests that are having different types of parties on that, at that location. And this isn't a, this isn't a complete list of our concerns, but, and these don't happen all the time, but it's reality, it happens. We live directly next door, and I've seen it very up-close and personal. And our other concern is the NPC, my understanding of the NPC zone does not encompass for a rental center or community center that I'm aware. And I'm not any bit savvy with the, as much as obviously any of you all would be, but I'm not, I'm not sure that that footprint of a community center is what NPC zone was intended for in terms of a residential neighborhood where you have kids that are riding their bikes and skateboards and playing on the sidewalks. So really, those are our concerns. Again, we appreciate what they're trying to do for the, you know, partial usage of it, but as neighbors, we would like to keep it as a residential home, just like all the other homes around our house, you know, around our home. And if there's any, if it is something that's passed, could we consider, you know, having a zero tolerance alcohol or no alcohol served on the premise at all? Without, absent of the alcohol, ninety percent of our concerns would probably be addressed. But as long as there's alcohol served, these problems will happen. And, you know, you see a porta potty in the picture there, that is because there's events. There's not enough room in that facility to house the type of parties that happen there. So there is a congregation outside back behind here, and I live in the house in that picture. Our deck is right on the side of that, other side of that fence. And as there's people coming out to smoke and chat, because it's louder inside, we're on top of that, you know, anytime there's an event there, you know, it is, it is a concern, you know, with kids. So we just ask that, you know, consider our point of view on that and, and, you know, vote to keep it as a residential structure.
Any questions for Eric? Will?
Mr. Knapp, how many times in the past year have you said that you have called the police about an incident or otherwise complained to the city?
The current tenants that lived in the property before moved out in around December-ish, so there hasn't been anyone living there in the events with Harold being a skilled nursing center. There's been a very limited use of it since December. Prior to that, he always had a tenant that lived in the facility and managed these events that we could go to, you know, directly and voice our concern. She was very receptive to that. Early on, not quite as much, but as we got more aggressive with her, she was a lot more on top of managing the loudness, the noise, the, she, you know, was an avid gardener, so she was always out on the grounds, you know, picking up and things of that nature. There were still things in our yard, but as far as within the last twelve months, you know, we've worked directly with the onsite habits, you know, people living in the facility. And there is no intention of having anyone live in this facility, so as it's rented out for a party, there is no guarantee that anyone with a vested interest in that property will even be there during that party. And that's again where we go back to, you know, parties with alcohol, with, you know, high school graduation parties and any kind of party you can imagine, I'm sure has been hosted there at some point. I've attended many parties, have had a good time, but, you know, as a neighbor, zoning this for that usage is only going to multiply and increase that, you know, with that frequency.
Eric, did you, Scott said there was a neighborhood meeting. Were you in attendance there?
Yep, and we, I, we actually, Scott reached out to us and we visited on the phone for probably an hour, and then my wife and I went and sat down with, with both of them for probably an hour a week prior to the meeting, just to make sure we were, you know, could we come to some sort of a resolution. I think he, I think they very legitimately understand our concerns, but with this particular zoning, there's no way to, to mandate or govern or police these type of issues that we have. I mean, I think they've made a good attempt to do that, but, you know, if not with these individuals, the next buyer, there's just no, there's no, there's no way to keep that under control.
And tell me again how long you've lived in this general area?
I've lived in this particular house since two thousand nine. I lived about five houses south of there since two thousand two.
Okay.
So we're very, we went to, my wife and I both went to Roseville High School. We're very familiar with the neighborhood, so, we grew up in that neighborhood, which is why we, you know, returned to that area after we graduated from college.
And did Scott give you some ideas about how to manage those enforcement questions that you had in lieu of having a resident live on the property to manage the property?
There was some discussion and some ideas. Some of them I think are certainly doable, others I don't think are real realistic. In terms of not having somebody living onsite or being onsite for parties, I don't know how feasible it is to show up after someone's been having a birthday party since five PM and you show up at eleven, say, okay, time to go. Well, when you've got fifty to a hundred and fifty people that have been drinking for five hours, good luck getting them out of there by, you know, twelve o'clock. And that's, that's kind of the concern we've had is, you know, with prior, you know, people habitating in this property, they've been on top of it a lot more than, I think, having a strictly event center next door. That's a complete different direction. There's, there's no income based on habitational use, it's all strictly rental use. And we're okay with the office, small office spaces and the nonprofit groups, you know, we, we've done some volunteer work that, you know, has been centered out of that location as well, but those aren't the issues we're concerned about. The parking can be a problem with that, but it's, it all goes back to the noise, DJ speakers set up outside, and I know they mentioned they'd have a rules where you can't set speakers outside. Well, then you have all these people who can't hear inside because of how small the space is, so they go outside. And back here in this area where that porta potty is, is where everybody congregates, and that's how we find the cups and the beer cans and the plates and the napkins and all of that stuff blowing around. Again, I, I think they, I think they would be a better owner than the current owners. I don't doubt that at all. But again, I don't think with this particular zoning encompassing an alcohol, free rein alcohol use, I don't think that's going to go over too well. I mean, we've got, you know, people that will drink here for several hours and they're parked right here, well, they've got to drive home. We've got kids that ride their bikes up and down the sidewalks. They ride their skateboards in that parking lot back there. There's a playground behind that church, you know, there's, it's not just a community center, it's a, it's a neighborhood. And we're not the only ones with, with kids. There's a, there's other neighbors immediately to the west of us, there's another eight-year-old kid to the west of them, there's two other girls to the west of them, you know, there's, it's not just us next door.
Any other questions for Eric? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else opposed to this item?
Yeah, my name is Kay Meyer, and I live at thirty-five twenty Kingman, so I am Eric's neighbor to the west. And, you know, I don't have a whole lot to add to what Eric said so eloquently, I mean, he's pretty well-covered it. And really, I'm here for Eric. I mean, he's a great neighbor. He has a couple of great kids. I still have a thirteen-year-old home, as he said, our next neighbor to the west has an eight-year-old boy. We got, we have a really nice neighborhood, and one rotten neighbor, you know, can ruin the neighborhood. I would just hate to lose any of my neighbors. So we both, we moved there in two thousand nine, we moved there the same year Eric did. Yes, we had the same kinds of experience, although not as intensely because we don't live right next door. But yeah, they sit in the church parking lot and argue and yell. It's noisy. It's, it's a concern. And, and as he said, you know, these gentlemen, I'm sure, you know, that, I, I know they want to do a great job, but what comes next? I know that neighborhood has gone through a lot of changes, and I know Eric and I and our neighbors that have just moved here, we want, we want it to be a good neighborhood. So I just thought I would come and throw my support against this.
Any questions for Kay? Thank you. Anyone else opposed? See none, I'll close the public hearing. Rebuttal time?
Just a couple things. As far as, we, we don't want to increase the parties, and that's why we want to get those rooms upstairs rented out. And the other thing that's, that's always happened there is, you know, like Harold has, you know, at one point he had, like, people that came over and did yoga once a week. Or right, right now, there's people in there doing line dancing on Thursday nights. What we'd like to do in addition to smaller things like that is, you know, see if we can get involved in, like, have employers come in who need a place to meet with their employees during the day. So they come in at ten o'clock in the morning, they cater in lunch, they're out of there by three or four in the afternoon. And I think if we do, if we can get that going, then that means that's the, that's that many fewer parties that you have to have in order to pay the expenses. The other thing about the live-in person, for the last two years, Rita was kind of the live-in manager at the place. She was a great gardener and really spruced up the outside of this property. I don't think she was a very good manager. And I think to get a good, long-term manager who wants to live there, that's just, that costs a lot of money. And if you have to pay that, then you've got to have more parties to pay the manager. And if you've got more parties, then the manager has to do more, and it just snowballs, so you end up having a lot more events there than we'd really want to have. So that's why we don't want to have the live-in person. As far as controlling what happens in the property, I think the neighbors in, in the whole city will find that we're going to be a lot better managers of this property. I think there's three things we can do. First, the city staff has recommended all those conditions, so we're going to have to comply with those. But more importantly, I think what we need to do is have a very specific set of rules. And when we sit down and rent this place out to somebody, we're going to be very specific and say, here are our rules. You know, no noise, no loud noise, no drunken parties. And if that's not the kind of party you want, then we don't want you here. Because we don't want this nice property torn up, we don't want the neighbors to have problems, we don't want to have problems. So we sit down with them at first, tell them what the rules are, tell them to go somewhere else, where else if they don't want to live with those. We're also going to require a substantial deposit so that if they violate the rules, they'll lose the deposit. And then the other thing, rules aren't any good unless you enforce them. So, you know, I think if somebody's over there on a Thursday night doing yoga, we probably don't need to be there for that. But if we have a four-hour party on a Saturday night, one of us or somebody that we hire will be there for that party to make sure that the rules are enforced. And if, you know, they start making all this noise, we tell them, no noise, or your party's over. And that's, you know, that's. tell them, "No noise, or your party's over." And that's, you know, that's... I think that's about all we can do.
Greg, I have a question.
Ted?
Sorry. Sorry, Kathy. Would you be willing to sit down with Mr. Klein and... or Mr. Knapp and some of the other neighbors and maybe talk about those agreements and what they're going to look like relative to the parties that you would accept?
The rules?
Yeah, the rules. And then, if Jay Center Mike, can I ask a question of staff? Can you speak to what Derek had to say about how this increases the opportunity for enforcement with having these... the different zoning in place and having the 11 o'clock rule, the noise ordinances? And could you kind of speak to how that could potentially be an improvement over the current condition?
Yeah, I believe that definitely as much... as specific as we can get with the requirements that they're held to, as far as zoning conditions, the better. As I was listening to the hearing and I heard the applicant address, maybe something I'd written down, and that was about having a manager onsite during, you know, larger events such as, well, definitely at least while alcohol is served. And that might be a way of distinguishing between, say, the yoga event versus a party that's being held on the premise. Another way of addressing that, that I'd made a note of, was maybe you may want to be more specific that alcohol being served, it has to be by a licensed caterer who has a license to be, you know, serving alcohol or cater... as part of their catering, rather than just bring your own and kind of... One reasoning for that is, is that under their kind of catering license that they have that can be taken into place, is that can be revoked by the city if there are problems. And so, there may be an opportunity to maybe regulate a little bit, consumption a little bit more if it's a caterer versus just, you know, serve yourself type events on the premise. I don't know if that's acceptable to the applicant or not, but I thought of that. And then finally, in addressing maybe the square footage question and the conditions, and condition number three right now limits the square footage that can be used for a certain use in the building. And it touches on the fact that restroom facilities have to be provided, but if the portable restroom facilities are a concern, that condition could be potentially tightened up to require those to be in the building. And that may require some alteration to the interior of the building to provide additional restroom facilities in that, if that's a concern of having that. It is... some of these things, maybe you'd mentioned, are these similar to like any single-family house? Well, the fact that it's an event center or, you know, being proposed to be an event center implies it's not really residential use. It is more of a commercial nature and regular use for events than maybe a single-family house would be used for. So, I think the conditions are fairly specific as they are. They could be tightened up if you suggested, but the more specific we can be, I think, the better for the neighborhood and the better for the applicants, so they know what they're operating under, and our enforcement officers have a basis to go in and question on a complaint basis.
Ted, does that answer your question? CJ?
I have a question, and it really goes back to Mr. Knapp and Ms. Meyer's concerns. When families... And I'm from a large family, and I know that when you have a large family together for a celebration of a birthday, that alcohol, and it becomes more and more and louder and louder and longer and longer, and you run out of alcohol and you go get some more. And, I mean, that's just the nature of those activities. So, perhaps in your regulations, maybe you could have some type of a security required for parties over a certain number. I mean, just someone... I know if you're sober, walking into an event like this, you might as well forget it, because there's nobody there you're going to rationalize with. But if you have a security officer that's required for a group of over a certain number, they know that they're there, and they know that there's something going to happen if, you know, they'll be alerted that, you know, "Hey, it's 10:30. It's time to wrap it up here and start winding down," or whatever. And that might be a suggestion for your rules and regs for events.
Mm-hmm.
That's the...
Kevi?
Yeah. Are you open to the restriction of not having alcohol on the property? How do you feel about that?
I don't think so. And even limiting it to a caterer is a really big restriction. You know, like last summer, I went to a retirement party for the wife of a guy at work. And, you know, they brought in their own food from Hy-Vee. They brought in a couple bottles of wine. We were there for three hours, and that was that. If you have to hire a caterer just to do your alcohol, that substantially increases the cost of parties like that, and it's less... it's less helpful to people in the neighborhood.
It also makes it a lot harder to police, though. I mean, if you didn't allow alcohol, a lot of the events you described wouldn't need alcohol, like the business events during the day.
Right.
Obviously, the yoga, they're not probably going to do that, so...
Right.
Maybe could this facility be geared away from those types of events that required alcohol or thought they required it? Could you make it work without that, I guess, is what I'm asking?
I don't think so. You know, our intent here isn't to have a commercial property rented out for office space. The intent here is to keep this as a place for the neighborhood to hold these events. And so, you know, if we were just going to turn it into a office space or a quick trip or something, we would have no interest in this property.
Well, like the daytime office events, like you were talking about, for people to come in and use the space for conferences during the day, obviously, that wouldn't require alcohol. That's what I was referring to.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I mean, if, you know, we could, you know, have a restriction that if there is alcohol served, we will have somebody there onsite to make sure it is used properly.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
I've closed the public hearing, and we've heard, so...
I'd like to move staff.
Mike is moving staff. Discussion. Greg?
One of the things I love about sort of Des Moines' urban neighborhoods, I'll call them, are streets like Kingman and... I'm trying to think of the one over Polk. Several of these streets that... College Avenue, some of these other ones, Hickman, that sort of have a mix of neighborhood and a mix of commercial. And I think we need to be careful if we aren't receptive to having mixed uses like this, that we become a little bit too suburban in an attitude of separating and creating bedroom communities. This is part of the flavor of this and of these types of streets and neighborhoods. So, I personally, I welcome new ownership taking over. I would like to see whether it's these 12 requirements and/or tightening them up. I'm actually in favor of maybe some of Mike's suggestions, this Mike Ludwig's suggestions, to maybe tighten them up a little bit. I don't think we should restrict the alcohol. I think there should be some way of zoning enforcement that is in place. But I think this is a really rich piece that albeit has had some issues, and I think those need to try and be addressed here. But I would be in favor, Mike, of voting with you with this. But I am interested in maybe adding on a little tighter things like Mike was talking about, so those are my thoughts.
Ted?
Thanks. I think I agree with Greg, and I've been in this neighborhood. I think if you went to Iowa, I went to Roosevelt in Iowa as well. It's been my neighborhood. I own a business in the district. I'm sad to say I've never been to a party at the Throw Center. Fifty years that I've been around here. But this place has been there for a long time. I think the neighborhoods, the Drake Neighborhood Association, the North of Grand Neighborhood Associations, Woodland Heights, the Ingersoll things that I've been involved in, we've been able to solve quite a few issues by having ongoing conversations about the uses of these kinds of things. And I feel really good about what the applicants have said they want to do relative to what's been done there before, which doesn't sound like it's kosher that any of that had occurred in the past. But this, to me, sounds like the way to tighten it up. And restricting alcohol kind of takes... No party I've ever had would go there. But the... Honestly, I feel very comfortable that these applicants would work very closely with you to restrict the kinds of uses, I think, that create the biggest problems for you. I think he said it on record here, that if you're going to break his rules, he's going to shut your party down. He's not interested in having parties that are going to do the kinds of things that create the concern for you in the neighborhood. I think if this were going to be built next door to you, and it didn't exist today, I might have a different opinion. But it's there now. So, I think I agree with Greg when I say this is the nature of these neighborhoods, and I think with good neighbors, you can make good policy.
Anybody else? Greg? Vicki?
I guess I'm just going to make a comment. Of the 12 recommendations, I don't feel like they're detailed enough to guarantee that these problems aren't going to happen again. I do feel like the prospective buyers have very good intentions, and I know that would be your intent, would be to try to police it that way. But say, you know, everyone needs a vacation now and then, and you're out of town, and one of these was booked, you know, a year ago, and you're not there. I don't see anything in these 12 items that's going to guarantee that these occurrences won't happen again. So, if it's allowed to happen, if it's allowed to be rezoned like this, I think the gentleman next door's going to have no choice but to call the police more often. But I guess I'm not comfortable with these 12 recommendations being enough to make sure that doesn't happen anymore.
I don't think we can do anything to guarantee that all of the ills that we would seek to prevent would not happen. And I think that the police are a great solution, and I think too many calls leads to enforcement action, and then the party's over. Not just on an individual basis, but in the long term. So, these gentlemen are both lawyers. They're concerned with their reputation and their license. They're involved with Iowa Legal Aid, and so they're sort of visible. They are longtime neighbors in the Drake Neighborhood Association, and I think they're doing a good thing. And if it doesn't work out, we'll know pretty soon. Somebody will give us a report, or the Register will get ahold of your faces and put in the front page all the scurrilous things that are happening at your establishment. So, I think it's a good idea. I think we're going to get better enforcement. I think the ownership has great intentions, and they understand what we're saying.
Shirley?
Yeah, I would just like to commend those two gentlemen for undertaking this. I know Mr. Harold Wells, and unlike Ted, I have been to several events at the center, and it's not always a situation where alcohol is being served. But I've been to some very lovely events at that center and have some very fond thoughts about the kinds of things that go on there, realizing, like Jack said, you don't have any guarantees of anything anywhere. But I think with the stipulations that staff has recommended and with the statements from these gentlemen about what it is that they really want to do and the backing of the neighborhood associations, I think we got ourselves a real win-win situation. I guess I just never realized when Harold owned that and was having those events that it was not in compliance. I just always had a very good time there, and it was always a pleasant experience for the neighborhood. So, I would vote in support of the application.
CJ?
I would be in favor of making a motion, but I would like to see staff add that the restrooms be considered indoors for the size of the group. I think that's pretty important.
It's Mike's motion, so that would be a friendly amendment if he would...
Okay. I would suggest a friendly amendment. I didn't hear a motion. I'm sorry.
Mike made it, so Mike can choose.
I would not go along with that friendly amendment. I believe they're going to have to do things to the toilet rooms inside this building anyway. And I wouldn't want to see a large portion of the first floor consumed with toilets to accommodate an occasional outdoor gathering. I don't think that would be a fair burden. They could have to put three toilets for each sex, you know, to accommodate an event that might happen twice a year because it spills outside. I think that's an undue burden.
Mike, if... Oh, I'm sorry. Vicki?
I just wanted to comment for the record that I have been to an event at the center, and I really enjoyed it. And I don't remember if alcohol was served or not, but it wasn't an issue, and I am glad to see it being preserved. I'd like to see it continue to be used for the neighborhood. So, I'm not against its use. I just think the alcohol limitation would be good. So, for the record.
Greg?
Yeah, if number three is enforced, before they get their certificate of occupancy, you know, they're going to have to go through and prove that there are existing exits and restrooms and things. And I don't think you can count outdoor kibos in... I don't believe so. So, they're going to have to go through and prove all that and work through that, through the building permit process. I had one other thought to throw out to everyone. Is it worth requiring a better buffer between this gentleman's property and this property, relying on that short length of fence and whether it stays and whether it comes back? And obviously, blowing trash or noise and things in the past have been an issue. Should we require a bit more of a landscape/fence sort of buffer that they could work out amongst themselves or staff, or just a better buffer?
Do we know how tall the fence is now?
It looks five-ish. Where's that one picture?
Mr. Knapp, six feet?
Six. Just about. It's from the church park left to the back of our house, the side of the front of the house.
Well, there could be many solutions, from dense evergreen sort of plantings that, you know, that could buffer sound. We could just, if we chose as a board, or if you were willing to accept a better...
Yeah, I would include inclusion that the applicant work with staff toward ensuring a proper buffer and leave it at that. You know, if that fence doesn't go along the total length of the side of the house, I know you can't build a tall fence in the front yard, but it sounds like there is opportunity to do something a little bit better. I would support that.
Ted?
I don't think that's unreasonable unless the next-door neighbor doesn't want it there. The extra landscaping. Mr. Knapp doesn't want it to be there, then I don't think we ought to ask the applicant to put it there. So, if the staff's going to work with him...
With approval of the neighbor.
Yeah.
Okay, so Mike's modifying his motion to include enhanced landscaping that staff will work out between the parties.
Well, let's call it buffering. That might be landscaping, a better fence, whatever.
Was there any additional suggestion on alcohol service regarding... I think the applicant said they weren't willing to have a caterer license, but the applicant's being present, management being present?
Your motion, Mike?
No, I think there are enough teeth, and this gets back to enforcement. You know, I think of a time when I lived across the street from a $400,000 house that was falling apart, and it took me a little while to get some action from the city, but eventually some things were done. I mean, you know, things happen. To me, it gets down to enforcement. So, I think that the rules that the city's put in place that we're imposing here... So, I, I think that the rules that the city's put in place that we're imposing here have enough teeth. It gets down to enforcement.
Anything else?
No. We're, we have three parts to this. We'll do A first, and then B and C separately. So, part A is recommending that the proposed zoning be found not in conformance with the existing Des Moines 2020 Community Character Plan designations of low-density residential. All those in favor of that, please raise your right hand. Opposed? Nobody's opposed, okay? And parts B and C. B is staff recommends approval of an amendment to Des Moines 2020 Community Character Plan to revise the existing future land use designation from low-density residential to commercial pedestrian-oriented neighborhood node. And part C is all of the staff, all 12 of the staff recommendations with the addition of the one Mike agreed to add regarding the buffering between the neighbor and this property. Everyone clear what the motion is? All right, everyone in favor of that, please raise your right hand. Opposed? Vicky? So the motion carries, so it goes on to council?
Yeah, just for clarification, the council meeting on June 20th would have a set hearing item for a public hearing, the first meeting of July. So, I'm sorry, first meet, May 20th, the first meeting in June. In that, so, council would set and advertise a public hearing on May 20th for June 10th. So the public hearing in front of the council would be June 10th.
Okay, thank you all. We have committee and directors' reports, nothing from RNO. Any other committees want to raise their hand? Mike, director?
I think we covered it with our 5:30 session.
Okay. In that case, adjourned. We're adjourned.